On the line. Good evening. We would like to call our special meeting, January 31st, special meeting in order. Welcome those who are joining us in the audience, those who are joining us remote. We thank you for joining us tonight. As we open up, I know we have Council Member McNair on the line. Council Member McNair, can you hear us? Council Member McNair? She's on mute, but she's nodding. Okay. All right. Can you see her, Dina? Okay. All right. So with that, we'll start with an invocation. Volunteers for prayer?
I am here, sir.
Okay. How you doing?
I'm fine.
Good. All right. So if we could, let's stand for praying and then the Pledge of Allegiance to follow.
Dear Lord Jesus, once again, we come to you asking you and thanking you for just a great, great day. Lord, we here in city government, the city council, as we come together tonight to go about doing the city's business, Father, help our minds to be open. We ask you, Father, to also let our minds be king and fool in how to go about doing things fairly and correctly on the city's business. Lord, we thank you also, Father, for a very aggressive and positive time of retreat. We thank you for that, Father. We thank you also, Lord, for all of the men and women that work to take the city forward with a great, great set of people that we have. And Lord, we just thank you for tonight. We also ask you, Father, to remember the Thompson home tonight.
Yes.
In Jesus' name, you know what our heart is asking for. So we send that to the Thompson family. In Jesus' name, we pray. Everyone say amen.
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 Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilman here. The prayer. With that, counsel, we will look for a motion to approve the agenda. We'll work off of our buttons. Councilmember Benevente?
We move to approve the agenda.
All right. It's a motion by Councilmember Benevente, seconded by Councilmember Banks McLaughlin. Any discussion on the motion? All right, counsel, I'll look to you for your votes to approve the agenda. Councilmember McNair?
Yes, sir.
You're green or red?
Green.
Approval of the agenda?
All right, green.
Green. All right. Motion carries, Madam Clerk, unanimous by those voting. Item 5.01 is the Merkison Choice Implementation Grant Partnership Certification and Leverage. Mr. Colley?
All right. So thank you, Mayor, Council, for having us tonight. We are kind of at the precipice of a pretty big goal that we've been working towards for quite some time. The Merkison Choice Implementation Grant, which we're going to talk about, is due in about a week and a half. I do not intend to be up on midnight. The day that's due, uploading everything, so we've got a couple more pieces to wrap up, and we'll be ready to apply for it. A couple of those pieces are what we're here to talk about tonight. So just to talk about Choice Neighborhoods for a moment. So, you know, public housing had a model for a long time that was federal money invested in and pays for, buys and owns public housing. It is run on a shoestring budget. It degrades over time. It gets torn down, rebuilt. Then they came up with this HOPE 6 idea, which Fayetteville greatly benefited from, where they said, let's bring in private partners and structure these things more like private investment happens. And that was great, and it did a lot for that area of our city. But they learned from that program, and that grew, and that kind of became Choice Neighborhoods. And so Choice Neighborhoods is exactly that. It's about leveraging public and private dollars, but it's about more than just the housing. It's about the neighborhood and the people that live there. So the first step in applying for this grant that we're applying for was to apply for another competitive grant, which was the planning grant. So back in December of 2020, Fayetteville was one of 11 cities that was awarded that grant across the nation. It took us about two years, two and a half through COVID. We had a lot of online Zoom meetings with the community, but we never wavered in council's commitment to working directly with the community to create a plan that was what they wanted to see happen. We had a lot of meetings with nonprofits, faith-based organizations, Fayetteville State University, NC DOT, everybody who had a piece to play in this area of our community. And we took council's direction at the time. I was pretty new to staff way back then, that we have a strong commitment to diversity and inclusion in working in this community. So, you know, I was fortunate enough to go up to Durham in October of last year and receive an award from the American Planning Association for Advancing Equity and Planning for this, for the plan that we submitted to HUD for that grant. And so, you know, to me, that was a professional group that I'm not a part of. I'm a housing guy. I'm not a planner, all right? We hired some planners to help us out, but a professional group to look at what we were doing and to say what a great job we did was kind of that outside validation that we achieved, that goal that council set out for us. So as I said, Choice Neighborhoods is about three components: the housing, the people, and the neighborhoods. So just kind of a broad overview, the housing plan includes 207 mixed-income rental units and 25 homeownership units. The idea here is for this to be the spark for capital investment from the private sector in this area. And so we want to have a very high-quality, high amenity development come out of this. On the people side of it, it's about helping folks who live in the neighborhood have the keys to success. That's done through economic self-sufficiency, youth, and adult education, health and wellness, and working with the community and being a part of the community through that process. So the Choice Grant we're applying for is about an eight-year timeline. So the programs that are put in place with that grant will last for, at a minimum, eight years, if not into perpetuity. Also, there's the neighborhood component, which is about really increasing the build environment around. And counsel, I cannot tell you, we would not be competing for this grant without the investment that you all made and the citizens approved through the $35 million Parks Fund. The senior center, the tennis courts, the funding and partnership for the MLK Park, all of those are huge aspects of this grant and really are going to show HUD when we apply that city council has a strong commitment towards making this plan a reality. We've also heard from the community that a grocery store, a bank, and a pharmacy are very high on their list of priorities. And so in this plan, we have an early concept and are asking for a portion of the grant money to go towards a private partnership to bring in that neighborhood grocer. So it really does take a village with something like this, and we've got several partners working with us. As I mentioned, the grant is due coming up pretty soon. The official deadline is February 13th, but I'm going to be sleeping easy that night because ours is already submitted by then. So the city stepped into the lead applicant and coordinator position for this. That means that we will manage all the grant reporting timelines, the money. And then the co-applicant, who will be right there with us, is the Fayetteville Metropolitan Housing Authority, Ms. Weeks, Executive Director, and at least one or two of her board members are here with us tonight. They will also be the co-housing developer with Jim Smith, who will be, has a development company called JBS, Inc., and they will be working on the housing finance and actually the construction and bringing that development online. For the neighborhood and people leads, we're going to have a group called Urban Strategies, which is a national nonprofit. There's a little over 30 Choice Implementation Grants that have been awarded in the history of this program. Urban Strategies is working on 19 of them right now. And so they really have been a powerhouse to help us really understand things and make sure that we maximize this grant opportunity and the partnerships that we can bring to the table. We met with Cumberland County Schools and Superintendent Connolly to talk about this program, and after about 10 minutes of talking to us, he said he's in. And so Cumberland County Schools has signed on to work underneath Urban Strategies on the education component of the people plan. So the grant and all is $27 million. We're doing some last-minute tweaks and adjustments right now. It may go up just a little bit from that, but roundabout, that's where we're looking at. And so out of that, $20 million will go towards the new housing development, including the 207 units of new development, the demolition of old properties, and the infill homeownership opportunities. The people aspect of the plan will achieve $4 million and a little bit extra in order to provide those supportive services to make sure that the residents in this community do have past or success. And the neighborhood portion will give us about $3 million that we can leverage with other things, including some existing resources that council has to make a lasting and dramatic impact in this neighborhood. So one of the first things that we're going to ask council to vote on tonight in your motion is to authorize the city manager to execute an agreement. All of these organizations are still drafting and moving some small minor revisions. You have a draft agreement in your packet that you can review, and then our attorney's office is helping us to put the final touches on that so that we can get that signed and submitted. As I talked about earlier, Urban Strategies has been around for 45 years, working all across the country. We talked about the 19 grants there. One of the really cool things about them is that while they're based in St. Louis, they assign leadership to the project, and then they hire locally. So for all of the social workers, case managers, project coordinators, that'll be needed for this program, those all come from our local hiring pool. Urban Strategies is also a community development financial institution, and I didn't realize I kind of came up with a thing that was super catchy, but it's a bank without a bottom line, right? And so it is a lending institution that seeks to do good, not maximize return on investment. They still want their money back. They're a lending institution, but they do things that better the community. So in our original transformation plan, we had a kind of a two-site solution, which was centered around further north towards Pamley Country Club, the Merkison Town Homes, which is the Fayetteville Housing Authority's property currently, and then closer to Fayetteville State University, Elliott Circle. You can see that as the red and the blue or the one and the two on the map. As we got into it with these extremely knowledgeable professionals from across the country, they started talking to us about what needed to happen in these neighborhoods, and we realized that the Merkison Town Homes is kind of up there on an island. There's a lot of commercial and industrial around it, but Elliott Circle was right there in the heart of this neighborhood. And so we decided to shift our focus to making sure that we invest in that one site at Elliott Circle. So the next things I'm going to show you are really about Elliott Circle and the amenities and things like that, but it was about pulling this in close to Mary McDonald Park, right across the street from Smith Rec and E. E. Smith, right down the street from Fayetteville State University, and the new business hub that the city council helped invest in. So the site plan for Elliott Circle is about 16 and a half acres. There's 110 units there right now. Less than that are okay to be occupied, and even less than that are actually leased up right now. It's pretty rough out there. It's the nonprofit that owns it, they charge affordable rents, but that also means that they don't have enough money to keep reinvesting in the property. And so without an intervention, it's only going to get worse. So we're lucky enough that they signed on to partner with us and the Housing Authority for this effort. We've got a lot of different housing types, and I'm just going to kind of flip through the pictures and not spend too much time looking at them or talking about them, but also the entire development is an absolutely beautiful concept designed around parks and greenways and trails. So to get to the design, the architects, the Housing Authority, and the developers spent a lot of time talking to existing residents and community members about what it ought to look like. Should it be a super-ultra-modern design? Should it be, you know, very classic and historical? Should it be traditional-looking? And they came up with this concept here, which blends some of that modern design with some traditional, and really puts a lot of emphasis on public safety, clear sightlines, slows down traffic, makes a walkable neighborhood. You can see here that from the street, there's a sidewalk, and then your front door, the parking is behind back, and really makes this into a neighborhood feel. Just some of the amenities that we're looking at here is a community room, playgrounds, those trails that we talked about. While it'll have a laundromat in the community center, it'll also have in-unit washer and dryers. Any of us looking for an apartment, that's what we would be expecting. That's what we're offering here. Here's just a couple examples. I'm not going to kind of belabor those, but you can see these at your leisure, but it's something that the Housing Authority, the architect, and the developer wanted to make sure, and that Choice Neighborhoods requires us to have extremely high architectural style, a beautiful development to make a Choice Neighborhood. So there's two functions in the multifamily portion. There's a family-oriented one, and then there's a senior-oriented. The senior would be a three-story with elevators. It would also have a lot of community amenities within the building. So, you know, as seniors are a little bit more challenged to, you know, get out and explore the community, it'll have, you know, community rooms, libraries, things like that within the building. So at this point, one of the pieces that the developer and your staff have worked on is how to make this project financially feasible. And so we're looking for a city council to loan $1 million that will be fully paid back so that it can be reinvested in future housing priorities for council as well. So we did not totally abandon the Merkison Town Home site. It will be demolished as part of this grant. The Housing Authority has plans pretty close to immediately after the completion of the Elliott Circle site to begin development on Merkison. It will not be part of the Choice Grant, but it will nevertheless be a modern, privately-owned, mixed, affordable housing development with those community amenities that you come to So another component of this that's really exciting is the potential for infill homeownership in and around that Elliott Circle. After we build this brand-new, beautiful community, people are going to want to live there and take advantage of those same amenities, right? And so we want to be able to put homeownership opportunities in place. What we would be doing is taking $3 million from our Housing Opportunity Bond and investing that in homeownership. But the nice thing about homeownership programs is while they're really hard to kind of structure and make happen, the people who live there pay a mortgage. They go to a bank, and they qualify for a mortgage. Now, they may not be able to qualify for $350,000, but they qualify for what they can at 30% of their income. And then when we sell that property as a new homeowner, that money comes back to the city to be reinvested in other down payment programs. And so we think we can do 25 homes and have about $750,000 in down payment, get the rest of it back to reinvest in other homes across the city. So I think it is important to make sure that council and the public are aware that this is a mixed-income community. So on top of the 60 replacement units of public housing, there's 105 units that will be income and rent-restricted to be affordable, and then there's 42 market-rate units. And that ensures that we get the maximum number of points on the Choice application, and that's exactly what they're looking for, is that real mix of incomes happening in the community. On top of that, we'll have the 25 homeownership opportunities that'll really be for that moderate and middle income. A lot of young people starting out buying their first house, or folks that work in service industry that have been saving up for a while. Those are the types of folks: a young police officer with a spouse and two kids. That's the target for this type of housing. So the timeline on this, I know council is anxious to see things like this happen. Unfortunately, it does take time to build large construction projects. So our developer laid out a timeline. I put on here July 24 is when we expect to get the award. We'll know a little bit in advance of that because they'll shortlist communities, and HUD will come down and actually do a site visit. And so at that point, we'll know how many folks we're competing with and where we're at. But nevertheless, July, August is when we expect for them to make their official announcement of who was awarded the grants. From there, we immediately start working with residents in the neighborhood. Part one is relocation. Part two is all of those success factors, the workforce development, education components that we talked about earlier. Skipping ahead, because there's a bunch of different steps here, we expect for both phases of it to be open by July of '29. So that's about a four-and-a-half-year timeline to bring that project completely to fruition. As I said, it's an eight-year grant, and so the homeownership opportunity would happen over time. We don't expect for it to take that long, but we did program it out over the full eight years. I'd rather set expectations and exceed them than not need it. So the financing plan, this is where, you know, it gets a little complex. We talked about the $1 million. We talked about the $3 million for homeownership opportunity. So the last piece is $4.5 million of our federal home funds that the city gets each year. So we got a really exciting opportunity through the American Rescue Plan. Once that was passed, we got a whole bunch of extra home money, and we've been looking for a project to invest in that. And so this project really does fit that profile, especially with the residents who live at Elliott Circle now. And so this will be a perfect opportunity for the city council to invest some real serious federal dollars into this. Another thing to point out here, now, this isn't the appraised value once it's all done, but once this is all done, we will have put $67 million of public and private money into the housing situation in this area. And so there's some level, we haven't done that calculation, of property taxes that the city can see coming back as well.
Are you saying on the publicly-owned stuff? They don't pay taxes?
So this is all privately owned by LLCs. The Housing Authority is part of the LLC, so this is privately-owned housing.
That pays taxes?
Yes, sir. So off of the housing piece, as exciting as that is, there are people and neighborhood aspects to this plan, too. The people gets about $4 million to look at economic stability and self-sufficiency, mental and physical health, preparing kids to enter into the school system, and preparing kids while they're in the school system to graduate on time and ready for a career or for college. The neighborhood stuff is pretty cool, though, I got to say. First off, we're looking to improve access to healthy foods and lifestyles, create access to trails and multi-use paths, develop placemaking and neighborhood branding, and improve access to public parks and housing quality. One thing before we dive into that that I think is important for council and the community to know is that every resident that is impacted by this development has a right to relocation services provided through the Housing Authority and Urban Strategies. They will help people come up with a plan of where to go, and then they will ultimately have the first right to return to the brand-new development. And so that is a federal requirement that they don't mess around with. And so there's not a lot of play for us in that we have to make sure these families have plans and go and land in an appropriate place. Yes, sir. So those projects, this is kind of just an overview slide. I'm moving a little quick, so we'll skip that one. So the first thing up is NC DOT, we're all pretty familiar with the fact that they're looking at redeveloping Merkison Road. They have a fully-funded project that is currently in acquisition and getting ready to happen at the upper portion of Merkison Road, and then they have an unfunded project on the lower portion that goes through Fayetteville State University and into downtown. The city has funded for quite a few years now a commercial corridor revitalization program, so we programmed in eight years' worth of funding for that. That's for businesses to get matching grants to improve their parking lots, landscaping, and facades. On the residential facade piece of it, we're looking for local funds to help improve this, the single-family in the neighborhood. It's hard to do the homeownership piece when you don't clean up the existing housing conditions. So here you can see some concepts. These are actual houses in the neighborhood. This is after what we estimate to be about $40,000 worth of investment in the facade. So you can see the dramatic difference that is possible. We would be looking at doing loans to landlords and grants to homeowners for this program. One thing that we put in here is that with all of these programs, there is a requirement that small local businesses are utilized. And so with that $67 million that we saw for total housing development with all of these neighborhood projects, with all council has already invested in in the neighborhood, there's opportunities for small businesses, and I know our procurement department takes that very seriously. Our team has partnered recently on a general contractor training with Fayetteville State University and FTCC. We want to make sure that this money stays invested in our community and circulates in our economy. So Project 2 is all about healthy foods. So we're looking at $2 million of the grant and $1 million of our Community Development Block Grant Funds that we get annually to help bring to fruition a small, neighborhood-focused grocery store in the heart of that neighborhood. grocery store in the heart of that neighborhood. We're also fortunate enough to meet with the folks who did the Red Rock Global Study for us several years ago, and with Kingdom Community Development Corporation, and we were able to get a commitment for $3 million from a community development financial institution to invest in that project. Part of the demand for that is that... Yes, sir, yeah. Part of the demand for that is that part of the Transformation Plan, the planning grant, was to hire an economist to look at market demands, and the market study said that a small neighborhood grocery store is feasible in this community. We may not be able to get big-box retail at this point with the density we have, but something that serves the students at Fayetteville State University and the surrounding neighborhoods is absolutely feasible in this neighborhood. So the next project, we really wanted to tackle community confidence and making sure that this area is branded and known as a Choice Neighborhood. And so a lot of that has to do with some of that planned DOT project later on that helps with traffic flow around the university. It also gives us an opportunity to work with DOT and our Public Services Department on art and murals, better transit stops that have, you know, art incorporated into them, and also, you know, some type of community identity and branding. One of the things I learned about Merkison Road when I moved here was that that ain't a neighborhood. It's Broaddale and Seabrook and Eccles Park and College Heights, and there's a whole bunch of neighborhoods there. And so what I kind of envisioned is riding down the street and seeing road sign toppers that say Broaddale and Eccles Park and College Heights. And that's a way for us to identify and also celebrate the history of these neighborhoods. Here's a couple of concepts of, you know, those sign toppers that we talked about and the nicer transit amenities that we could be looking to do. The crosswalks would be great. If the project moves forward at DOT and we start seeing more of pedestrian-friendly, then we'd look to do some crosswalks similar to what we've done in our downtown that are, you know, branded in alignment with the Merkison Choice effort and with Fayetteville State University. So the next one is really about lifestyles, health, and fitness. And so the major project here is one that my colleague, the Parks and Rec Director, Mr. Gibson, has put a lot of love and time and energy into, and City Council has supported quite a bit. Part of that, it comes out of our Center City Parks and Trails concept, but it is a trail down the eastern side of Glenville Lake. The head of that trail would be at Mary McDonald Park, which is about a block and a half from our Elliott Circle site that we're planning to redevelop. So we're looking to connect Elliott Circle to Mary McDonald Park to the trail system. It's a big deal. It's an expensive project, but absolutely, yes, sir. And so we're looking at Parks and Rec, Mr. Gibson put in a grant application for $2.1 million to help make that happen with FAMPO. We'd be putting a million dollars of the Choice Neighborhood funding towards it. And then Urban Strategies has said that because this project deals with some of the issues around, you know, racial equity, health and wellness, parks, amenities, and green space, that there's a huge opportunity for us to seek out other grants or philanthropic sources there. That, again, is one of the reasons we brought them on, is for that expertise. So that is the four major neighborhood projects, the commercial facade, the residential facade, the grocery store, and the trail. Right now, when we added up everything that council has done and is going to do or has funded already, we got to $44 million worth of leverage for this grant, which is impressive and competitive. So the second action tonight is to authorize the mayor to sign a letter, a draft of which is in your agenda packet, and, you know, we'll be able to submit that with the grant to count as leverage towards this. So that's the presentation I've got. I'm sure I may have a couple of questions.
Couple?
Yes, sir.
Couple dozen. So, thank you, Mr. Colley, it was a great presentation. I will go with Councilmember Banks McLaughlin here and Benevente, and then I have a question.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Colley, thank you for the presentation. I also want to thank the community for participating with the community engagement. You somewhat answered one of the questions that I had regarding the residents that currently live in the townhomes, Elliott Circle, and townhomes at Rosemary. Just want to ensure that they won't be displaced.
So, I mean, there's no two ways about it, there will be displacement when you tear down and rebuild. The Uniform Relocation Act, that is kind of the governing law that we follow for this, it says that you have to have a HUD-approved relocation plan for those individuals, and that means every family living there, when the bulldozers show up, knows exactly where they're moving to, and it's a place that they can afford. And then, when the place is rebuilt, they're able to move back. Now, our approach to this project has an added benefit that the folks living in Merkison Town Homes will be able to stay where they are until the new development is built, and then they'll have the option to move into that.
Okay, thank you, that's, I just wanted it on record, and that was the only concern that I had, thank you.
It's a huge concern of ours, too, ma'am.
Yeah.
Thank you. Councilmember here.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm also ready to make the two motions that's needed to go forward. Job well done, sir. I've been, just like the councilmembers, I have been watching this and been a drum major and moving forward for a number of years, so I do like this program. The financial part has grown as far as where certain dollars are coming from now, that's even more, gives a more better appetite. The, I think you said the 2-point, the 2, was it 2.1 million? Grant for the park, trail, and connections, that's gonna be submitted by our director, Mr. Gibson, I like that. I like the support from the other organization for the $3 million for the grocery store, that's a big, a very, very big plus. And the meetings that we have had, I've been very impressed with them, especially the one on Wednesday night that I attended, where you really, really listened to the residents. We didn't hold back, you let them ask their questions, and there were a couple of questions, and if you could respond to them loudly tonight, because not everybody was there at the meetings. And one was that when a resident moves, and it's time to go back into the new development, the options that they have, and if they can go back to a single level, or no one living over them, I would like for you to answer that. And also, answer how the amenities are set up on floors or in buildings, so that, because a number of those of our residents there are seniors, so they may not wanna walk across the quad to go somewhere. So if you can kind of be specific about that, so folk can also hear that. And the minority builder percentage support, well, you know how we feel about that. So I'm glad to hear that that's there in place, and hopefully I can come back and move forward with the motions. Thank you, thank you, Mayor.
Yes, sir. Councilmember Benevente.
Oh, he, I was asking him questions.
Oh, oh, okay.
Yeah, I'll be brief, I know we've got some other things to talk about tonight. So, you know, one of the things, when we did the resident meeting and then a broader community meeting the next night, and so at the resident meeting, we had very targeted questions. A lot of them were from seniors who didn't love the idea of a three-story senior building. And so what we said at the time was, you don't have to live in the senior building, it'll have amenities that are closer for you to get to and enjoy, because that will be inside the building. But you have first right to return to any unit that's of the appropriate size, right? After that meeting, the developer was walking to the parking lot with me, and he asked if we could, you know, kind of, we brought the residents there on city Parks and Rec vehicles to, because we were concerned about transportation availability coming off-site to Fayetteville State University. And he said, could we do that again and take them to one of my other senior developments so that they can see what it looks like and what it means? And that, to me, I don't wanna digress too much, but that, to me, is really the heart of what this team has put together here, is that everybody on the team genuinely cares for the folks that are being impacted here. And so, A, we think we did a good job of answering the question that night, but we also want to follow up and show them what a new senior development looks like with new safety standards, with amenities in place. The last question was, it really is about that first right to return, and Housing Authority, some of, Dawn's leadership stepped up and said, look, we will work with you to figure out what unit you want to go into. There's 207 units here, and there's less than that of people coming back, and so there is availability. Everybody might not get their first choice, but everybody gets their first pick at it. And so that will absolutely be a high priority to make sure that the residents moving in do have that first right to move in.
Yes, okay, and thank you for that. And just my last, my last question, or that I noticed here that I did not ask, when we started talking about the funding earlier, that's why I'm so happy of the additional funding availabilities that we have. We started talking about the $12 million that was gonna come forward from our GL bond from November. Right, well, we talked about, but it was out of the 12, but yes, you're right. And, but it was gonna be $6 million, or, well, $6 million from that 12. Now, if I'm understanding correctly, because this is what really made me even more excited, with all of these additional partnerships and grant proposals that you stated tonight, that's a much lighter request from that amount, from that source of money, just due to these other resources that you mentioned, like the 4.5 and the 3 mil, and the 2.1 mil for the Parks and Rec connection off of Merkison Road in the Seabrook community. So that's what I'm understanding, right?
Yes, sir. So there's, we went from needing the entire bond capacity to needing a much smaller amount, to also packaging that support in a way where that money revolves back into the city and can be spent on more homeownership for moderate and middle-income individuals. On top of that, we have other funding sources, and other funding sources come available. And so, so long as we meet the commitments that the mayor's gonna sign a letter for, staff will prioritize ensuring that we use the bond on homeownership activities that help that moderate and middle-income get their first house, start building equity and generational wealth.
All right, thank you, thank you, Mr. Colley.
Thank you. Councilmember Benevente.
Thank you, Mayor Colvin. Director Colley, you talked about this being a catalyst for a lot of private investment to come, and in fact, the Merkison site is something that you said is not a part of this particular grant opportunity, but really could be seen as one of the first examples of some soon-to-come additional investment to this area. So I understand that, you know, we're gonna be contributing some of our bond money towards this while we still keep some, you know, available for future opportunities. Come that time, or after we get over this hump, I would like to hear about some of the efforts that your department's gonna make to leverage that remaining bond money for encouraging additional investment, because I certainly hear from folks on the other half of Merkison Road, you know, after Country Club, if you look at it from that direction, saying, you know, what about our end? So I'd love to share with them that, hey, this is a catalyst, this is a spark, a lot of investment can be coming to this area in totality, and in fact, maybe in the future we're gonna have some incentives to bring this all the way up and down Merkison Road. Could you share potential for that in the future?
So I think one of the things that's been crystal clear to me since council and the community started talking about the Housing Opportunity Bond, was that we wanted to make sure that we spent that money across the city, not just in this specific area, and that we aim towards helping people get into homes and become homeowners. And so, absolutely, those housing opportunities take place all over the city. We currently have that program already running. We were fortunate enough to get some money from our state delegation that has helped us start that program and hold the Housing Opportunity Bond until we had a specific project in mind. And so we, I think this is important, we currently offer down payment assistance up to $20,000 for moderate and middle-income families, and we're one of only five cities in the state that does that.
Mayor Colvin, I understand that Councilmember here made a motion, if possible, I'd like to second that.
All right, thank you. Mr. Colley, a couple of quick questions, but I did wanna acknowledge Ms. Weeks and her team from Fayetteville Metropolitan Housing Authority, who's playing a huge role. Ms. Dawn, did you have any comments or anything you wanted to say, reference to the role that you all playing, you're a big part of this?
Well, no, we're just waiting to get the money.
Show me the money, I got you. All right, but thank you, and good to see you, Mr. Cito. Also, Mr. Gibson, real quick, I know you just got to work today, but the African-American Heritage Trail, is that what we had petitioned legislature about that was, that gave us some dollars to connect some historic sites? Are we using a leverage in that? Is that some of the General Assembly money that we got a year before, a year ago?
Yes, sir, you'll be getting a briefing and a feasibility study and everything on that, on the work session coming up.
Good, I appreciate it. And Mr. Colley, on the people's side of your equation, the workforce and the learning lab, which is critical, because, you know, as we, as we build this, we've said, you know, this is home for me, and we've said that we were gonna be very intentional about not gentrifying it, make sure that the people grew with the investment. Do we have other partnerships that are in that space? So are we working with NC Works or FTCC to do the workforce piece and the early learning stuff?
Yes, sir. So during our presentation, I'm sure you remember, we had a slide that had, I couldn't count it, 30-ish organizations on it that have signed leverage letters and letters of support, so that all in, 44 mil from the city in leverage, 27 million from the grant, we're looking at $140 million in total community investment here, and that's coming from all of those partners, from Partnership for Children and Action Pathways on early childhood stuff, all the way up to NC Works on career readiness and job skills training.
Well, that's good. And then finally, the last thing I'll say before I go to Councilmember here, is it looks like we finally found a place in the field, this food desert, you know, that has been a huge concern over there, so the City FI and those commitments that they have with that are certainly welcome news to me, and I'm sure to the residents and to other people in the community, so thank you.
Yes, sir.
Councilmember here?
Thank you, Mayor. At this time, I move that we authorize the mayor to sign a leverage letter, and also that the city manager to sign in a partnership agreement, and also, we move that the, move forward that the Merkison Choice Implementation Grant be applied and move forward.
All right, it's a motion by Councilmember here, seconded by Councilmember Benevente. Discussion on the motion to approve the implementation grant application execution. All right, council, look to you for your votes. Councilmember McNair?
I am agreeing, sir.
All right. Madam clerk, it's unanimous by those voting, and again, I know it was mentioned earlier in the opening prayer about Councilmember Thompson, but we know prayers with him and his family during the time of bereavement, as well as recovery, so prayers with him. But thank you, Mr. Colley.
I just wanted to add, Councilmember Thompson did come to the community meeting last week.
Yeah, yeah, so we know he would be here.
Absolutely.
All right.
Thank you all.
Yes, sir. All right, item 5.02, International Farmer Market Partnership with Cumberland County. Mr. Gibson, thanks for joining us this evening.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This is a quick overview, there's been some conversations with the county about doing some work with an international farmer's market on some property that the city now owns. And what I got for you right here is a brief understanding of what that looks like, and what we'll be asking the council to do is allow the city manager to appoint staff to work through this agreement with the county, and then bring it back to the council and see if that's something appropriate that they'd be interested in working through. What you have right now is what we affectionately call the Makerspace. The council approved a concept, probably about a year and a half ago, and we've done some improvements to sort of stabilize the building. It's at the corner of Rowan and Merkison and Bragg Boulevard, it's about three-and-a-half-acre site. We did some roof improvements, we did some removal of some underground tanks, working with DAQ to make sure that was done properly. We refenced the place, and then we did some site leveling, just to give it a decent touch. Here is a concept that Shula Ferris did for the city when we embarked on trying to turn this into a Makerspace, which is generally places where artists can do their work, whether it's welding or carpentry work. And this was a design that Shula Ferris came up with. There were some elements that would be in this site, from artwork to a trail that leads back up into Rowan Street, to a... back up into Rowan Street, to a, what would be a multi-use facility with shaded structure for either farmer's market or selling goods that the artist made. Here was the planned view of it from the corner across the way on Merkison Road, looking at the site in its totality. And here's a basic budget where we thought that to make this happen would come to fruition, and that was probably about $4 million. The council member or commissioner did a, Commissioner Keith, with his timeline and what he got approved through, the commissioners talked about this space for commitment, the project purpose, location, a budget. Here's a basic view of what their monies would do to change what that site looked like from a gateway and a purposeful environment for international farmer's market. And the budget that he presented and some of the items that was in there, so you can see, they have a big view of what they want to do for an international farmer's market. And what that request is, and here's some views of what that would look like, an open-air market, where an incubation environment. So what we would like to do is to ask council to approve or to vote in the affirmative to allow the manager to go ahead and have these conversations, work this out, and then bring it back to council for approval.
All right, before I go to Councilmember here, indicated about the motion, I have a couple of questions. Councilmember Hondros, and then Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Director Gibson. Couple of questions. These renderings all look good. They were for the Makers Mark?
Makerspace.
Makerspace area? And I could be misunderstanding, but I thought when it was first mentioned to us that they were looking, the county was interested in Catalas Site 1 across the street.
There is some interest in that. There's probably a longer road that we would have to go down to make that happen. I would not say that that's off the table. I think in the affirmative, to give the manager the opportunity to discuss, we would probably bring back maybe some options.
Thank you. And the second question, there were some budgets in there, high budget, low budget, and I guess the devil's in the details, and we'll get that back in the future, but what exactly is the county asking for? Just use of the land, rent of the land, or they're looking for us to participate in this? There's some big numbers.
No, we wouldn't be participating. I think, from my knowledge, and I don't want to go too far, but our participation would be land, and I think that would be it.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So what I feel that I need to say about this, because I know that we had bought the land and we have walked through the building, and we have this great plan that we've been trying to do, and I think we're at a great point right now, and we're at a turning point and a growing part for our city and our county, that the commissioners came to us and said, you know, we have ARPA money, we have grants, let's come together and let's figure out how we can, you know, make this part a better part for our city. And it is a win-win collaboration on everything. So, you know, we started out the conversation, they saw it, they said we can come in and be part of it. So I just want everybody to realize that this is not something that just happened. We've been talking about it for, what, five years now?
Yes, ma'am. Close, close to, probably about four and a half.
Five, so, you know, the city and the county are collaborating and trying very hard to make amenities and quality of life for us a lot better, so thank you.
All right. Thank you. So, Mr. Gibson, I think Councilmember Hondros hit my question, when will we know, you know, I'm hopeful that as these discussions take place, and I've talked to the chairman a few times, and hopefully will continue if the board says this is something they have an interest in, is making sure that it is a Fayetteville-Cumberland County project, that, you know, you are in the collaborative department of Fayetteville-Cumberland County Parks and Rec, going to serve a big role in that, so hopefully as the discussions take place, that can unfold, but I am interested to know. Now, the lot that is across from Catalas Site 1, where beside where V Point was on the corner where Chiefs is, is that a city-owned lot or is that state?
The front part is not. The part where the parking lot goes back is the cities.
So from the parking lot back to toward Bragg Boulevard is what you're saying, in cities?
No, sir. It's the opposite way. Wherever you see that parking lot is, where the bus stop is?
Yeah.
Where we left the parking lot, you got to go back toward MLK.
Okay.
The front part of it does not belong to the city.
Who owns that?
I know who owns it, but I don't know the name.
So it's a private owner, not a public property?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right, and the area where the actual Amen Auto was?
That's ours.
That was tore down?
Yes, sir.
In the middle, kind of like that little island? That is city property?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right, so with that, any other questions? I'll go to Councilmember here.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. And just as the mayor stated, I thought we had already acquired all of that, I thought, all of that property. But Mayor, I move that the council approves a partnership with Cumberland County on the international farmer's, the Fayetteville-Cumberland County International Farmer's Market project, and that I also, within the motion, would like to include that the mayor and the city manager be a part of these discussions with the county.
All right, it's a motion by Councilmember here. Councilmember Davis? All right, seconded by Councilmember Davis. Any questions? All right, council, look to you for action on that. Councilmember McNair?
I am agreeing, sir.
All right. Madam Kirk, is she unanimous on those voting? Thank you, Mr. Gibson. Thank you, Mr. Colley. Great time for investment of our city. Great job, council. With that, we'll take a motion to adjourn.
So move adjourned.
All right. Have a good evening.
Yep.